Has the secretary, has the meeting been advertised in accordance with the Opa-pong meeting?
Yes, it has, Mrs. Backer.
Please rise for the pleasure of the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two presentations tonight.
Mrs. Backer, you need to do your role call first.
Role call.
Mr. Baalke.
Here.
Mr. Bishada.
Here.
Mrs. Bruno Reculia.
Here.
Mr. Sayak.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Here.
Mrs. Esposito.
Here.
Mr. Mackenon.
Present.
Mrs. Trapp.
Here.
And Mrs. Backer.
Here. The first presentation is to Mr. Terrence O'Connor.
I want to have Terrence come up, as you know, if you've been coming to board meetings regularly, Terrence has been on the board as the student council representative to the Board of Education. And in that position, which he did quite well, it's his responsibility to let the board know what happenings are on campus here at the high school. And I will say personally, he's done a very good job as that. And since I've been on the board, I think his attendance in that position has been the best. And it is an elected position, so he's elected among his peers to do this. And I think you're going to be going to America College in Washington, in DC, Washington, D.C. And you're going to be majoring in, what's it, history and communications law. Communications law. Good luck there, and we really appreciate the time you spent on the board. This is a certificate to Terrence O'Connor from the Sable Board of Education for being a liaison between the Board of Education and the Sable Memorial High School Student Council during the 2010-2011 school year. So I'm here for the Board of Education. Terrence, we appreciate your time, and good luck in college.
Pen Pal Day?
Yes, I would like to call Kupijsanovic and Linda Corpey, as well as the other teachers that were involved in this Pen Pal program. And we're also going to show, but before we show, could you just explain a little bit about it, about the program?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Dr. Alfano, for allowing us to showcase this wonderful program.
Yes, Lucy.
Thank you for giving us permission to showcase this wonderful program. I'm actually going to turn everything over to Sue Jasevic and Eddie Howard.
That's right.
They have had a wonderful program going on between them for many years. We also have Heather here, who showcased in this evening's clip that you're going to see in the classroom close-up. We have Dylan, and we have Paige, and they are some of our stars in our production. But the real stars are all, Rachel, I'm sorry. Our real stars are all the children that had an opportunity to participate in this wonderful program throughout the years. And actually, in this particular clip, we have some students who were actually in Mr. Howard's second grade class as the students in the classroom, who were now coming back as the Pen Pals for his present second graders. So I applaud him on a wonderful, wonderful endeavor. I've just heard that Mrs. Jasevic is retiring, so we have to recruit someone else from the high school so that this great program can continue. Because there's something to be said, in this generation of texting and email, there's something wonderful about getting a real old-fashioned letter. Right, boys and girls? Right, okay.
And I just want to introduce Nina, who just walked in, she's one of mine, but thank you, everyone, to be in. I've been doing this program for about 12 years now. I started with Porter Ballard over at Arlo School with my friends, and we wanted to do something with the second graders in the high school students, once we first started with computers. And I've been doing it ever since with so many different teachers, Susan Abbott Marco and Chris Tequila over at Eisenhower School. I've done it with many teachers over at Arlo School, such as Terry Waters. I've done it at Truman School with Carol Creed and Martin Milkowski and Eddie Howard for many, many years. And now I have a number of students who are students of mine who had done it when they were in second grade, or when they were in third grade, and when they were in fourth grade, and they've made pleasant memories. We've done the stock market game, we've done geography games, we've done all kinds of things, with the second, third, and fourth graders, along with, of course, writing letters back and forth. Okay, does anyone have anything to say about it? Do you want to say anything, Nina?
I just wanted to say, like, I never knew how much fun it would actually be, like, I walked in the class, and I immediately knew who was Pen Pal, because she described herself, and we just made eye contact, and we knew each other right from then, and it was actually a really nice experience.
Hey, Rachel, do you want to say something? Dylan has, oh, I know, we're getting more chance.
Hi, on that day, I was thinking it would be the best day of my life. It was so fun being on TV. I think it was like the first time and stuff. I think like, it'll never be the same thing again, but it's just like, the first time me being on TV.
I am Pen Pal Day because you have a new friend, and you have somebody to look up to when you're older, and then if you see that kid on the playground, you can say hi, and hang out, and play with each other.
I like Pen Pal Day because I, when I said five things about my Pen Pal, I thought that it was going to be someone else, but then it was another person that I thought wouldn't be the same thing.
Thank you very much for honoring us, as well as the students. And we had some pictures just up, Pen Pal Day, if you want to pass it around. Did you want to show them? Okay, and that really shows pictures worth a thousand words. They always have fun. I give my students pictures, the second grader's pictures, so they have many memories of them. And some of my high school students still have the pictures, and have brought them in, when they were in second, third, and fourth grade, of the pictures that they had, or the CDs you can see way back when, we had the discs, and they got the discs, and they still have them. You know, so they're among their treasured memories, that they still have. That's a good thing. Thank you very much.
Mr. Howard, would you like to say something? And then we'll show the film, which is produced by the NJEA, and it's a really nice film. It's about seven minutes, about how the program worked. Mr. Howard, it's always good seeing you.
It's just a wonderful program. From day one, as soon as I heard about it, I jumped on board, and it's been successful ever since. It's just, I always try to find new avenues to basically make teaching fun, and this was a great opportunity. My students learned how to write a letter properly, and they corresponded with one another on a monthly basis. And even though my kids were having a lot of fun, they were learning at the same time. And they gained a role model through it, and it just was unbelievable. And it's just great to have us. It's a great memory. Thank you.
Thank you to the kids. Now we're going to watch the film. It's about seven minutes long.
It's someone you look up to, right? It's almost like a role model. You're watching Eddie Howard prepare his second grade class for a visit from some very special friends. These students from War Memorial High School in Saterville are coming to meet their pen pals for the very first time.
We're playing kind of a game, it's called Guess Who. Okay, my students have written five things that they've told you, five things, and hopefully you can guess who your pen pal is by the five facts. They look up to these high school kids. They think it's cool. They really think it's cool. And when they get a letter back from them on a monthly basis, their eyes widen, and it's like giving them a birthday gift.
I have two good friends who used to go to Olympia.
This program started over 10 years ago by high school teacher Susan Jasevic. She saw an opportunity for her students to reach out to the second graders.
We have written letters for various holidays. We wrote for Halloween, Thanksgiving, Christmas. They wrote to explain to them about their midterm exams which are coming up. They also prepared PowerPoints. They like doing something for another person, and it just works out well.
My favorite color is pink. My birthday is April 12. I like to eat turkey and mashed potatoes on Thanksgiving. When I met Nicole, she seemed like she was a nice friend to her friends at high school. She really seems like a nice friend, and I'll always remember my pen pal and this day because it was the most fun, best day ever.
Next, it was off to the library, where the high school students shared their PowerPoints with their pen pals.
Maria Horn. So Maria and Dior. Through this experience, I learned that little kids aren't just little kids, and like, that girl's going to grow up to be someone just like me. I was little at one time, and I want to be a teacher when I'm older, so I liked working with her. Maybe that will help me with a decision that maybe I do want to work with little kids, because I really had a lot of fun today, a lot more fun than I thought I was going to have.
My name is Danielle.
Hi, my name is Danielle.
And when I played, I learned her favorite color, and I learned what her older brother's name is, and I know, and he's like my friend.
When I grow, I want to be an artist.
Her name is Rachel. She was a very social, cool girl, funny, she was very funny too. I think this Pen Pal product teaches the kids communication. They have to communicate with somebody on a more mature level than what they already have.
Her name's Courtney. She's nice. She has four dogs. And today, when I woke up, I knew today was the best day of my life, because I knew it was going to be very good to see my pen pal and play with her as well.
My pen pal, like, I like, I need to play, I need two, and Playstation 3, and I have that.
My pen pal, yeah, he likes chicken nuggets, he likes fries, obviously. He likes the chips a lot.
Especially my students, you didn't even know, but you were having fun while you were learning. You learned how to write a letter properly, and you were practicing the rules of grammar while you were writing on a monthly basis. It's a wonderful program, you know? The excitement of getting that letter once a month, it's almost like watching your kid when they score a goal in soccer, or a basket in basketball. As we speak, my students are sort of missing their pen pal already, hoping they'll see them again.
I have a number of students this year, as I had them, they passed to work pen pals themselves when they were in second, third, and fourth grade, when I did it with other schools, and now work pen pals. I do think that the second grader gets more out of it, however, I think they both do, because they both come away with an appreciation of it. I do it basically for the children, and I think that, you know, as a teacher, that's why we're in education, is to do things for the children, and I think this is a wonderful program for them.
Thank you. I would like to say, about two or three years ago, I showed at the staff meeting, there's about 900 people that come in the first day of school, the teachers, and sometimes we really don't see the perspective of the little ones. And there was a little clip about a father and his son, and about, the father was saying, they were going fishing, and the father said, you know, how boring it was, wrote in his journal, you know, that, you know, it was kind of a regular day. And then they showed, they opened the journal of the five-year-old boy, and he said, "It was the best day of my life." And, you know what? You just made our day. It's really, it's fascinating to see the young and the old, and how important it is to them. Like, we may not see that, but I think the teenage and the high school students didn't realize how much of an impression that they really make on these youngsters, the second graders. And I think it was, and I'll never forget that clip, because as I grow older, I understand, whether it's my nephew, or whatever, that you, sometimes we forget, but it's there, you hear, it was their greatest day, they couldn't wait. Whereas some of us think, oh, it's just another day, we're going to work. But I know Mr. Howard, and Ms. Jasevic, and I know all the teachers, just think about, you do make their day. It's just a wonderful pen pal activity, but it's more than that. It teaches us more. Really, that's the best, really, education we can ever get. So thank you very much, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Monthly technology work order reports, monthly maintenance work order reports, everyone should.
Remove them, they were not put on the table.
So we're going to cancel them?
Yeah.
Approval of minutes. Reorganization and executive session, May 10, regular and executive session, May 17. Can I have a motion to accept the minute?
So move.
Role call.
Mr. Baalke.
Yes.
Mr. Bishada.
Yes.
Mrs. Bruno Reculia.
Yes.
Mr. Sayak.
Yes, with an extension on the May 17 minutes, I was away on GE business.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Mackenon.
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp.
Yes.
And Mrs. Backer.
Yes, with an extension on the May 17th. No student council report, no parent involvement, no attorney, district highlights. Mr. Mackenon.
My first district highlights. Everybody should have a copy of district highlights, and I just want to highlight something very significant to students that were inducted this year into our chapter of the National Honor Society. The list of seniors that were elected in their junior year, Basara Piscar, Neil Desay, Monica Donahue, Teresa Heislop, Etta Tadakia, Abby Lahey, Terrence O'Connor, Gianna Palmer, Tapping Palmer, Michelle Pascoe, Bianca Petricelli, Michael Fair, Mika Raza, Daniel Seaman, Catherine Seaman, Haridai Shah, Shina Shah, Saad Shamir, Ravi Traverdi, and Michelle Wellin. The seniors that were elected in their senior year, Yara Apai, Daniel Carr, Victoria Dreisi, Alyssa Philianio, Brielle Uzo, Emily Jukas, Thomas Kalisa, Michael Lin, Jesse Meister, Kusha Modi, Robert Nunes, Ivan Bolokol, Pooja Parikh, Tara Rapelier, Ryan Roberts, Chris Salvador, Anu Talati, and William Zebra. The juniors that were elected in their junior year, Courtney Aik, Natasha Amaro, Kevin Andrews, Nicole Hunna, Jacqueline Sina, Vishal Dalaw, Erica Donahue, Lehan Ek, Michael Pralita, Kristen Fitzsimmons, Janice Frontera, Bridget Giovenko, Steven Gobach, Kelsey Germada, Hansa Josi, Apook Kechar, Timothy Lopez, Caitlin Lozito, Amanda Martino, Anari Mata, Kenya Patel, Hayya Patel, Jennifer Philip, Nicole Sevili, Kyatan, and Imula Upala. And I apologize if anyone knows those students, I mispronounced those names, I apologize. The Sable Middle School had a very successful year at the St. Jude Mathemath. Mrs. Carrie Gilbryd and Mrs. Stephanie Woods, coordinators of the event, ran the fundraiser from the middle of April to the beginning of May. After all collections were made, the coordinators were proud to announce a grand total of $4,733 to be donated to St. Jude's Children Research Hospital. A special thank you goes out to Vincent Baboon, grade six student, who raised a total of Overall, it was a huge success, and one of the best years yet in the Sable Middle School. This is really good. Congratulations to Elaine Beyond and Erin Bartko for the Sam Selup Elementary School. These fourth-grade students won the Celebrate New Jersey Writing Contest for their articles about the short-eared owl and the Liberty Science Center. They were honored at the award ceremony at Mamet University in May. They will also be recognized, along with their teachers, Betty Clark and Teresa Elicio, at the Sable Borough Council meeting on June 13, 2011. Mr. Peter Select Nijas' class at the Sam Selup Elementary School was involved in a cross-curricular project called Guess How Many Marshmallows? Contest were held for the high school and the upper elementary school staff. The students publicized the contest, counted money, and guesses, and created certificates for the winners. A $100 donation was sent to the parents of autistic children to recognize autism awareness one. Congratulations on the job well done. And that concludes, Madam President, the district.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mrs. Backer. Building and grounds, we have our education leadership workshop, the New Jersey Department of Education, will be held at the high school on the 13th and the 14th, and right now, there's over 425 people, administrators and supervisors from around the state of New Jersey that are coming to Saterville. So this is a two-day extensive workshop, everybody, any board member that would like to come to look at what's going on, I think it's what I gave you to say. Being financed, the first one is bill list. Second, obviously, is also another bill list, and the amount of $109,000. The third is the contract approval of our attorneys, Schwett, Simon, Ellstein, and Celso. Number four is our professional auditing services, is approval of that company as well. Number five is an agreement for participation in coordinated transportation services. Six is our lease purchase with all our savant copiers that are around the district. A new sound system is being approved tonight for $8,700, and we hope it's ready in time for the end of the school year, which Mr. DeAndrew said it may be, but we'll see. As far as the agreement, and I want to congratulate and thank everyone that was involved, Board of Education, SEA members, we finally approved, the SEA and the Center for Board of Education have come to an agreement for the 2010 to 2013 contract, and the Sable Association.
And at this time, since we were talking about the SEA contract, I just wanted to inform the public, the highlights of that contract. I first want to say that I'm very happy and proud that the Board of Education was able to reach an agreement with the SEA. I know it took longer than probably both sides wanted to, but the hard work and the time that the Board of Ed put into it, we certainly well worth it from our perspective. And I want to thank the committee, which also was Mrs. Bruno Reculia, and Mrs. Jill Trapp, and myself, and I want to thank the professional staff, Dr. Alfano's administering team, for their administrative and professional expertise in this process. To synopsize the contract, for the certified staff, the salary increases will be a total of up 8.5% over the three years, 2000, I think, 2010 to 2013. The support staff, a 6% increase, and cafeteria staff, a 4% increase. Although health insurance coverage remains the same for current staff, any new staff hired after June 30, 2011, will only be offered the single coverage in a POS or an HMO plan, and when they have been employed by the district for three years and one day, which is essentially earned tenure, they will become eligible for family, husband, or wife, or parent and child coverage, whether that be the case may be. This one is notable, the employee's health benefit contribution will be greater of 1.5%, which has been mandated by the state of the employee's salary, or the current contribution language. And I want to add that our teachers in Sable, a lot of people don't know this, and a lot of people in other districts of Board of Education don't know this, the Sable's school, the teachers have been donating towards their salary increases long before I've been on the board, and I've been on the board for six years. And it's not lost on the board, that the fact that they were doing that is the situation that we have been in, where we can still maintain our services, not let go staff, not privatize, and still be able to conduct the district's business with a relatively low cost per student. This, along with the network change that was proposed, produces savings through the board and the employees, which provided the additional funds to put into the teacher salaries. With the new teacher salary increase, the district can now become more competitive, we believe, in middlesex county regarding the hiring of highly qualified teachers to educate our children. As far as prescription plan, it basically stays the same, although the contributions are now tiered, and are more equitable than a single rate. Basically, you know, it wasn't fair if somebody who was single, didn't have a family, was paying the same rate as somebody who had a family and children, so that was more equitable. Part-time workers are now able to increase the hourly to 29 and a half hours without benefits, and there are other minor language changes. But again, I want to emphasize that this is an agreement that we feel is fair to both the Board of Education, the taxpayers, as well as the district. And it became, you know, when we were negotiating, and these were long days, and these were long times, you know, it was pretty obvious to us that the people that we were talking to across the table, the people that educate our children, and, you know, if you're a teacher, and I've always said this, you spend five and a half to six hours a day with our kids, and if you're a coach, you have a couple more hours a day than that. So we're happy that we're able to offer the package we think is very competitive, what we think is one of the best in the county. And of course, the board has its critics, but I will defend this to my dying day, because here in Sable, you know, we take education as a top priority, and I'm glad that we're able to reach this negotiation. I personally, being on the negotiation team, is the first time I've did it. I've learned a lot. You know, I went in there not knowing much about this, and I come out feeling pretty confident that if I have to do that again in the future, I'll be a lot smarter in that process. So I want to acknowledge the SEA negotiating team, particularly Krista Delucia and Ken Vares, you know, they represented their union very well, and I must say that, and if I was, you know, in the union, I'd be proud of the way they represented them. There's no hard feelings here, you negotiate your best deal. I'm a big fan, and so was the committee of collective bargaining, they think we sat across the table, we ironed out a deal. Again, it took longer than both sides anticipated, the bottom line, we got it done, and I'm personally relieved and happy that we did that. With that, I guess we'll see you in a couple years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Backer. Any other questions with Section B?
Dr. Alfano, I'm the attorney, there's no salary increase for that, that's the same arrangement.
No, everything is the same, as it was. C, personnel, non-certified, we have a resignation, a retirement, an unpaid medical leave. This is by contract, the holiday schedule for the teenagers, which is on page five. Black seal license upgrade, and these are the paraleg professionals that will be involved in the extended school year, as well as paralegal professional substitutes for the same extended school year on page six. And on page seven is the professional days for the non-certificated people. Any questions with Section C? With not moving to B, resignation of Kelly McKelney, I wish her well, she's been in the district probably over 11, 12 years, she's moving on to another district. A retirement of Bob Savo, what can I say? Bob's been here forever, and he is just a wonderful person, and he has really done a great job as far as educating students. And really, the staff of Saterville Memorial High School is one of the dedicated guys that I know, so we're going to sorely miss them, but he's moving on to green investors. Number three, it's an unpaid medical leave. I also want to wish Abigail Panzola a lot of luck with her unpaid medical leave, because she's going to have a baby, so I'm happy for her. Contractual retirement payments are listed. At a club, the lawyer's going to do some power school training. Number seven, again, are the teachers for the extended school special education year on page eight, and it runs to page nine. Page nine are some teacher substitutes, and there's also professional days on nine and 10. Any questions with Section B? With not moving to policy. Once again, this is the middle of the Statement of Assurance and Comprehensive Equity Plan. This is not an easy report to put through. Want to thank Colasalblin again, this is one of the 38 different reports she does probably for me in June. I mean, there's a ton of these reports that go out, and I really appreciate her. Kevin, if you would, would you just comment on number two, on page 10, if you would, please?
The National School Boards Association and the American Association of School Administrators are teaming up on a campaign to encourage the Department of Education to stop the sanctions associated with No Child Left Behind. associated with No Child Left Behind. No Child Left Behind Act, or actually, the Elementary Secondary Education Act, as it was formerly called, is up for reauthorization by Congress this year, and Congress has not exactly been very expedient in acting on it. I don't even think there's a bill pending before Congress with these specific details on the reauthorization. And basically, what the two associations are encouraging local boards to do is enact a resolution asking the Department of Ed to use its regulatory power to stop the sanctions associated with No Child Left Behind, so that districts don't continue to incur new costs as the act goes on unmodified, with a lot of the flaws that have been in it for the last six or seven years.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Again, page 12, number three, that's the power school technician job description. This individual will be predominantly in charge of the parent portal. There's a lot of responsibility, and we're just approving the job description. Any questions with that section? With not moving to Section G, Curriculum, Curriculum. Parent orientation for the fourth graders going to the Sam Selup Upper Elementary School. There's a walking field trip, and there's the red carpet premiere night, which is 2011, 10/11, which is Truman Talks. And Mrs. Coffey's not here, I know she ran back to do a function at her building, but I still am a huge program, and I want to commend her for it, and the teachers that are involved. SAD conferences in Chicago, at no cost to the Board, and approve a change from the concert from June 1st to the 9th. Any questions with Section G? With not moving to H, support services. Mr. DeAndrea's going off a 20-pass group bus bid. These are some waiver, transportation waivers. Joint transportation contract is on page 14, and there's two field trips. If you move to the addendum. If I can find it. The first part of the addendum is the high school emergency generator for $34,500. Number 10 is also a resolution for, again, the high school emergency generator. And the bus compound roof, we're going to spend some money, I'll try and fix that, because it is so, it was deteriorated to the point where we need to spend some money on it. And upgrading the electrical panels, also, we need to pay an architect to put that together, which is about $11,200. There's a substitute list there on the second page, and there's also a substitute list for personnel, regular teachers, on the third page of the addendum. I would like to remind everybody that tomorrow night is the awards assembly for the high school, and it's a very nice affair, and there is air conditioning, so hopefully, we can, you know, get that program off the ground, and it's usually, there's a lot of awards, and hundreds of thousands of dollars are given out that night. So it's a nice, it's a nice assembly. I believe it starts at 7 o'clock?
I think it's 6:00.
6:00, I'm sorry, 6:00 in the cafeteria?
Yeah, 6:00 in the cafeteria, and 7:00 in the auditorium.
And 7:00 in the auditorium. Okay, that concludes my report.
Right, question, the generator, how did this happen, is this, like, we rescinded it and we...
The rescinding, what occurred is when we took the final look at the specifications, there was obvious things that we overlooked, and the initial generator that we were going to do would not have met the capacity and the requirements that we were looking at when we took the final look at it. So based on that, we have to build a larger sized generator, and with that, we need specification to go out the bed.
So we're getting a large generator, larger generator for less money?
No, because now we have to go out the bed.
Oh, okay.
Because the second one was for the wood shop upgrade.
And the roof, was that budgeted for this year?
No, that wasn't. The roof is, on a rainy day, I've had an opportunity to go in there, it's in the rain this shade, and I think it's well worth the money we're spending on it. And it's long overdue.
Okay, any other questions on the agenda?
The buses, are those replacement buses or new condition?
Yes, every 12 years, we have to replace them.
And it's regardless of mileage.
Regardless of mileage, 12 years, they must go. There are some buses out there for 15 years, but generally, everyone stays with the 12 years.
And what do we do with them?
Depending on the condition of these, they may become maintenance trucks, they may be traded in, or they just may wind up, as you saw a couple months ago, in Haiti. Somehow, they wind up there when we trade them in.
I already want to see that in the paper.
Says Sable on the side.
Yes, it says Sable on the side.
Says Sable on the side in Haiti.
I did not know that.
It was in the paper. I never bring in the newspaper.
We might want to take the Sable off before we trade it in.
You didn't know Sable existed in Haiti?
Okay, I'd like to open it to the public for any questions on the agenda. No one? Okay, I'll close public portion. Can I entertain a motion for approval of the superintendent's report? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bauplan?
Yes.
Mr. Bishala?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno Ruculia?
Yes.
Mr. Syed?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. McEnone?
Yes.
Mrs. Crapp?
Yes.
Just want to point out that the contract between the SCA and Sable Board of Education just passed, put a 9-0.
Background information and discussion, I, this has always been, for me, I never really understood what that meant since I was out of here, background information and discussion. I'd like to ask the Board if we can change that. In light, I feel that the Board of Education spends a lot of time behind the scenes doing work, we probably spend a lot more time there than we do here, and we're divided amongst many committees. And what I'd like to do is, is change that title to committee reports, and for any committee that meets between the meetings to offer up a report to the public and to the rest of the Board on what they have done in their committees. So does anyone have a problem with that? And Dr. Alfano always puts in the highlights who's met, so you should expect it. So, starting tonight.
Madam President.
I will start with you, Madam President, about the curriculum.
Very good. How timely. Curriculum Committee met on June 2nd, the Curriculum Committee consists of Mrs. Backdon and Mrs. Bruno Ruculia, myself. I thought it was one of the very productive Curriculum Committee meetings that we've had. It started off with Ms. Bruno Ruculia gave us a presentation. For those who don't know, Helen is a conference educator in New York, and she was selected to pilot a new program on teaching elementary students that's heavily technology dripped, and it was very impressive. And it was impressive to the point that we even looked further into it, because it's not being piloted here in New Jersey, and this is something that we perhaps would like Sable to take the lead on, on this type of education at that level. So that was very informative, and we're going to follow up more on that, and more to follow in subsequent meetings. Also, in September of 2011, this upcoming school year, we've added a... I'm tired of that. I like that song. Starting September 2011, we've added a couple new courses into the high school, and one of them is Economics and Financial Literacy, another one is Algebra Applications. We also added a section into the APR History, and to AP US History 2 section, which is all good things. And also, starting this year, if you recall, the ninth graders coming in will be the first class that will not have the opportunity for a senior early release. So what we're doing is we're adding courses to the schedule, into the course catalog, so that there are viable courses for those students to take at that point. On the next meeting, we have a couple of things on the agenda we want to talk about, and also, Mrs. Zeichen went over the HESPA results from this last year, and I've asked her to, once she does some more analyzing of those and comparative analysis, that she send that out to the rest of the Board, but HESPA test scores were very, very good. We've exceeded the 90 percentile in passing in Language Arts, which I think is the first time in a number of years that we've done that. And also, I think I'm mad scoring up, I was hoping it was five points, I don't have it in front of me, but five points, so. That's heading in the right direction, and that's, and that's a result, or indicative of what happens right here in this building, so to one extent, congratulations to our professional staff for that. And again, it was a very productive meeting, and the Curriculum Committee has been very proactive, because we feel that that's why we exist here on the Board of Education, is to take a look at increasing the bar of curriculums as our students are more competitive in their, in those high schools, so. That's all I have on the committees.
Thank you very much. I know negotiation committees met, but of course, I won't ask them to speak. Delegate to New Jersey School Boards Association?
Thank you, I've got a few items. The NJSBA Delegate Assembly met approximately three weeks ago, and one of the major policies or position statements that they approved is a position that any charter schools that are formed in communities should have voter approval prior to being able to start serving children. And the rationale behind that is the fact that if a charter school comes into a community and public school students opt to attend a charter school, the state aid money follows them. And it was believed that that state aid money belongs to public education and should stay with the public school system unless the voters by a majority decide otherwise. So obviously, that's not law, that's just a position of New Jersey school boards. As you probably read, the Supreme Court ruled that additional funding will be going to the 31 Abbott school districts in response to a lawsuit brought on by the Educational Law Center in response to Governor Christie's education cuts. From what I understand, the reason that it only applies to the Abbott districts is that the original decision back in 1981 only dealt with those 31 districts, which is why the Supreme Court could only basically grant relief for those 31 districts. I don't know if that was just a way out for the Supreme Court to avoid requiring all of that funding to go to all of the districts across the state, or if that's truly the only thing they could have done. Certainly, you know, New Jersey School Boards is looking for full funding of these, New Jersey State Funding Formula for all districts and not just the 31 Abbott's. In case you're ever on Jeopardy! or just in the market for useless knowledge, Abbott versus Burke, Burke was Fred Burke, who was the Commissioner of Education in 1981, and Abbott was Raymond Arthur Abbott, who was the first student alphabetically in the 31 districts that were represented by the decision. He dropped out of high school in 1986, and according to an Education League article in 1989, hasn't been heard from since. Just thinking, I can throw that little piece in there. You can't make it up. In addition to that, speaking of you can't make it up, in addition to that, the state legislature has just passed new regulations with regard to criminal background checks for school board members. So in addition to teachers and people who work in schools requiring criminal background checks, Board of Education members now will as well. We have been advised not to pursue getting a criminal background check until regulations are set forth in the Department of Ed. I was told that they would be released today, I don't know if we've gotten anything, my guess is it's going to be a couple more days before something comes through. One of the things, or one of the options that pertains to all school boards is whether or not the school board itself wishes to reimburse the members for their criminal background checks, given the fact that school board members are volunteers. It was written into the legislation that boards have the option of taking that action. My question as Chair of the Policy Committee is, does the Board wish to move in that direction? Because if they do, we've got to amend our Board bylaw to allow it.
Now, is these background checks for sitting board members or anybody that's elected at a certain point?
Yes. Both.
Yes, both.
I would propose that you get reimbursed if it comes back clean.
It's a good point. And I'm sure that the Board could probably do that.
There's a lot of questions here, I know some of us, if you're in education, you've had a background check, is that...
We're waiting, and that's the part they're waiting for the rest of. I've had two myself already since I turned 18, I don't know if I'm going to ever create that with her. My question is, you know, is the Board interested in amending policy? Because if so, I want to get something...
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes?
Why don't we make a resolution through the New Jersey School Board for the state to pay it, since they're mandated?
I think that actually is already policy of school boards, but I will double check on that to be sure. I'll find out.
And ask them if the Assembly and the Senate are going to take that background check too. And I know you guys, I take personal exceptions to this, you know, this being done, you know? And I could talk to Governor Christie, because if you read the book, The Soprano State, which was his life's work, if you read that book, there wasn't one school board member in there. It was all members of the Assembly and the Senate, and now they're going to mandate the school board members, we have to take a background. You know, it's, I guess it's living in New Jersey.
The final item from the New Jersey School Board standpoint is, I attended training for middlesex county school boards regarding other items which are going to have a policy implication for us, which are the new anti-bullying law, which was signed into law by Governor Christie. We will be revising our harassment, intimidation, and bullying policies to conform with the law. There are now huge requirements put on the Board and the district from the state, one of which is the appointment of an anti-bully coordinator, who will be responsible for making sure that we basically have a bully-free environment, as well as promptly, and the law doesn't specify what promptly means, but promptly investigating and reporting directly to the Board any acts of bullying that are reported through the school district. It also places a requirement on school board members whereby if you are notified or become aware of a situation of harassment, intimidation, or bullying, you are obligated to report it. And if you do report it in a timely fashion, then you will not be held legally responsible for any adverse effects. Now unfortunately, the law doesn't go so far as to say that if you hear of something from a credible source, and you report it, and it turns out to be unfounded, and the person who you turned over as a potential bully decides to sue you for defamation of character, there's nothing in the law that guarantees that you will be defended and you'll be held harmless in that instance. So there's a lot of issues with that as well, we'll be addressing that one for policy. But the Board is going to have a significantly more active role in the prevention of harassment, intimidation, and bullying.
And who do we report that to, the coordinator?
Either the coordinator or the superintendent.
So is there a rep in each building?
There is one anti-bullying coordinator for the district. I have a feeling, at least in...
One in each building.
Oh, in each building, I thought it was a district.
No, no, no. Each building.
Okay. And I know one district that's actually appointed their board attorney.
I'll make that motion.
The interesting part about that is, written into the law, is you cannot hire a new person to do this?
Correct.
It has to be someone who is currently employed.
But anyone who is currently employed, any position?
It had to be certificated staff.
It has to be certificated.
I guess we'll ask a volunteer.
Be counselor.
See, I guess.
So there'll be a lot of policy changes coming forward.
The staff, the administrative staff is being trained on the new bullying laws this summer, Dr. Alfano has already scheduled us for all of that.
Oh, and by the way, the Board also has to be trained. So that'll be incorporated into the mandated training for all Board members. The good news is, we only have to be trained once.
And where do we...
The school board, will school board do that?
Yes, it would be through the normal governance training that we're required to take, whether you're a new Board member, or if you're just newly elected and you're going to be retrained.
So will all be scheduled this year for it?
It'll be as you come up for your training.
As you go through your background check, you come out, and you get your bullying.
And that's all I have to report.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Sure. Ground-mounted solar system?
That is mine. I've had the opportunity to meet Dave Samuel from CME, who's worked in not only with the borough, but also on a county basis, moving forward with a purchase power agreement for ground-mounted solar system panels. These systems would sit about 14 feet off the ground, and since we're having no luck getting funding from the state for our rooftop solar panels, I thought that I'd bring it to the Board as to, is there an interest from this Board to explore that avenue whereby a lot of our parking lots and open fields would become more or less solar farms?
Do we have the roof set? Are guys allowed, like, we're going to roof parking?
Excuse me?
We would roof parking?
No, you're parking with remain. You would have beams supporting solar panels about 14, 15 feet up in the air and providing solar panel that way. It's a big push going on in a lot of universities.
So have cup and parking?
And the cars park.
Hey, you won't get what?
Yes. Your cars would basically park underneath them. We walked, I went around with Dennis, we talked about different buildings. Obviously, the Eisenhower School is, in our minds, ideal with all the open field, parts of all of it. Obviously, here at the middle, the high school, the middle school, we have your open parking lots. The reason they suggest a power purchase agreement is that there is a lot of upkeep when you have ground-mounted systems. You pass the burden off to someone else, all you do is see the savings in the mechanical savings that they pass on to you. You're not able to sell off the S-Rex and all those other things. I attended a meeting, and nobody...
And is it, can a car, is it usually when the car parks under it, can it easily do down?
According to them, that cars are parking underneath them, you'd be able to plow. Buses, they have to be 14 feet high, because that would be the height of garbage trucks and things of that nature, and buses, so that buses, they would probably have to leave a clear path. You wouldn't want buses going underneath them, but mostly cars and things of that nature.
The attractiveness of the roof-mounted one was the security.
Yes.
How do you protect them from vandalism?
The fact that they're 14 feet up in the air. That's the only, that's the only thing that I was told. It is a thing that you're finding in a lot of universities. It is a thing that you're finding in a lot of universities. The Borough is doing it down by their water sewer plant, I'm being told.
Is there a minimum that we would have to install? How do we do the fields? Can we just do parking lots?
We, I did not get that far into the discussion because this is not only a Borough initiative, it's also a county-wide issue going on right now.
Mrs. Backo?
Yes.
May I make a suggestion that Buildings and Grounds, along with Mr. DeAndrea, look over these proposals and come back to the board with more information?
There are no proposals, that's the thing. And the question is, do you wish for someone, such as CME, to come in and give you a look through to see what possibilities there exist before we go through that?
Do we have any space other than parking lots available?
Really, the only place that has fields is Eisenhower. Really, that's the only building that has a lot of open land. And parts of the UES, parts of the UES other than that.
Personally, I'd rather stay the course with our own solar project. I mean, if we can get an answer from the state as to where they're going...
Well, it's not, I'm not looking into abandoned hours. This would be a supplement to what we're doing.
But I remember when we researched this, and I remember the reason we went the route we did is that purchase, the purchase power agreements were much more expensive. And financially, it wasn't a good thing.
Well, they don't cost you any, the purchase power agreement does not cost you any. You don't get the amount of savings that you would by owning your own. Because they invest all the capital, they lease it to you, they just give you electricity at a reduced rate.
So when you plow in snow, you're not going around...
You have to be much, you have to be very careful.
Yeah, so... And what happens if it gets damaged by snow plow? Are we, do we have to pay?
That's all things that you work at. There's a lot to it. That's why I didn't go crazy with it, because I had some of the state concerns. But it's going on in the county, it's going on in the Borough. I didn't want the board not to hear about it and have your own opportunity to say yes or no to it.
Well, I think we have to weigh, you know, we've been talking about this state thing for a year now. Nothing's moving in that way. They don't anticipate any coming back. But we have an opportunity to do something coordinated with the Borough. And I mean, I would suggest that we look further into it.
Does it cost for CME to come here?
No, well, that's the thing. Would you be interested in CME just coming through and giving us an idea of what we may be looking at?
What would that cost?
At this point, nothing.
And who's going to pay the cost? Is the Borough going to pay the course, the cost, or is the board going to be out?
No, you would only pay the cost if you were looking to move ahead. I mean, at this point, they would come through and give you an idea of the areas where they believe you could put them. Again, Dennis and I spoke, we kind of know what we need to look for. Panels that would go in a south-westerly direction, and that really gives us the middle school, the high school, Allet, UES, and Eisenhower.
How do you make the hardwired connection from the panel farm to the building?
I have no idea.
So the middle school, I mean, given the use of our fields, the middle school and high school, you're basically looking at the parking lot.
Yes.
I'm just not a fan of building a suspended trust over, if I envision this correctly, I'm picturing a suspended trust, much like our cafeteria is right now, with solar panels on top.
Yes.
So now you're taking a wide-open parking lot, which is very easy to secure, very easy for someone to see what's going on as they drive down Washington Road, and basically putting a roof on it and closing it and making it very difficult to see what's going on in the back of it. Is that accurate?
Well, I'm sure there's, I'm sure there's ways that you would provide adequate lighting and things of that nature, make it a safe environment. You would never leave it to where it would be totally dark and, you know, and an unsafe environment.
Well, could we suggest that CME do an analysis and come to us and brief...
Absolutely.
This is a good question.
Like, could we, we don't have to do it in parking lot, we just do it in a field and all that kind of thing?
Yeah, I'm only telling you the areas that we saw as open space that would be ground-mounted. Apparently, this is a big bush. Again, I've seen it in William Patterson. I happen to be up there for soccer games, pass by their university, and they're doing it in their parking lot. So this is becoming a big thing in a lot of places, these ground mounted.
And we can't do the power purchase agreement on the roof?
No, no, you could if you wanted to. If you, the board wished to go in that direction, and that's a good point. If you want to move away from purchasing it and going to a purchase power agreement through all of your rooftop systems, you could. This initiative right now that they're looking at is strictly ground-mounted, that they're trying to do.
Next thing I'm concerned is putting those trusts in the parking lot that our students, you know, who are driving.
I had the same, but it's a concept that's going, it's flying in a lot of places right here, open land. I mean, anywhere you're going these days, they're finding open land, they're making them into solar, solar panel farms. The opportunity...
I say have CME come in and give them a little...
I'll talk to Dave Samuel. And he's also doing a presentation on Thursday that I'll try to attend.
Is anybody objectional to listening to CME?
No, I listen.
If it's free.
Any internal questions? We have questions.
I'll coordinate with Dave and Jake one night and see if they can get before the board to do the presentation. Because I do know that they are working with the Borough down at the water plant and at the, at the border town. I believe he said a four-megawatt system, which is pretty big.
We need a lot more than that. We need a lot more than that.
No, they generally...
District-wide?
Remember, the whole system we were doing on all these buildings is only 1.6. 1.65.
So they usually have a prime lesson, just?
Yeah, my understanding.
Anything else for discussion?
I have a question. We approved a demographic study for the redistricting. Do we have anything on that? Have we made any progress with that?
No, we haven't.
Have we started it, or...
No. I had two companies take a look, and we just have a follow-through with their methods at this particular point. And since we have one new teacher in all the elementaries, it's going to be a while before, you know, unless we're going to put five or six new people in the elementary schools. Right now, what we're doing, we're taking, like I said, we're taking some of the people that, let's say, special in Spanish, like, moved to, on the car, and that's what we're doing now. We added another teacher in Eisenhower, but we haven't done that.
I spoke to Dr. Alfano about this, and I wanted to get the board's permission to send a letter to the American Legion Post 211. Many years ago, we used to have a program that the board supported and the American Legion sponsored called the American Legion Jersey Boys State and Jersey Girls State Program. I was actually a product of that program. I had no interest in doing this whatsoever. And I was selected for the program when I was in high school in 1992, spent a week at American Legion Jersey Boys State, and then in July of 1992, attended my first school board meeting, and I'm still here. So the program really has the potential to change students' lives. Basically, what it is, is a week-long program at Rider College, one week for boys, one week for girls. And you have the opportunity to run for and fill all of the offices in a mythical 51st state called New Jersey Boys or Girls State, all the way from your local town council all the way up to governor. And it's really a grassroots experiment in government and politics. I spoke to Dr. Alfano. He believes that we can resource it through the History Department, through Mr. Gentile. The American Legion in the past has sponsored it. It ended in 2006. The American Legion got new leadership, and at that particular time, I think interest on the administration's part of the high school was somewhat waning. And I'd like to send a letter to the American Legion asking them if they would still be interested in sponsoring it so that we can start sending boys and girls to that program again, starting for June of 2012.
I would support it. As a member of that post, I would, I would think that would be well received, and I could talk it up. It's a good idea. I know all the districts do it.
Yeah, the program, I used to, boys, because I speak at Boys State every year. That program has 800 students that attend every single year. And I'd love to get another two or three from Sarah, of both the Boys and the Girls State.
Sounds good. Go ahead.
All right, I'll drop a little.
Anything else? I have one thing I wanted to bring up. Years ago, I don't remember how long ago it was, but I remember we had discussed on this board about doing a project, like a buy a brick project to make a pathway or try to beautify the ground. I'm not really sure whatever happened to it, but I would just like the board's backing. I'd like to try to resurrect this, and I'm thinking, like, you know, maybe, maybe we could do something down by the football fields. I just want to research it. I know I need public support out there. I'm thinking of reaching out to some people to see if we can get assistance, so...
Are you referring to the program that Mr. Lambo referred to?
Yes, and he had started it, and I know, yes, and I know it never really got off the ground. I'd like to try the resurrection and see if we can do something. If I think we can get it through, I did talk to the attorney about it. I know that some of it's complicated, and that's why it never got through. But, and if we can do it, I want the entire board to work on it together to see if we can get this going. I think there's, I think there'll be a lot of support in the public to do it. I think the problem ends up more from a legal perspective and jumping through hoops to get it done.
As I mentioned a few, I worked in the district where what they did was the graduating class at the high school had the opportunity to purchase bricks, and they started the path in front of the school by graduating class. It was a much smaller school district, but that's how they started it, by graduating classes. Parents purchased bricks in the name of their kids, and that's, that's how their parents started.
And I think there's a lot of families in this district too that graduated here. So I think there's a lot of creative things you could do. So I think if we can get it going, and I probably look to maybe the Buildings and Grounds Committee and Dennis to get in and see if we can get something going.
What would the money be earmarked for? Where would the money go? Into general fund or to something specific?
No, the money, the people who we purchased the bricks, the money would go to the bricks and to the actual lane of them. There would be no, it's not a profit.
No profit.
It's not a profit lane.
Because I think when Pat was doing it, there was like, going to be some profit.
Oh, there was, well, a lot of...
Well, no. What it was, the goal was to start by the opening of the football field, that path that winds down to the road.
Right. I'd like to look into it too, like the Buildings and Grounds Committee, because I know there's a lot of drainage issues, and I'm trying to think of maybe if we can, if we can get this project going with... We spent all that money on the football field, and the outer limits aren't all that nice, so...
Totally agree.
Just one thing for the committee to consider on that, and I do support the idea, but try to think 10, 15 years ahead, especially if these people are going to be walking on them, how are we going to maintain it going forward?
So we'll see how the participation is. I'll see if we can get it off if we have the participation. I know there's some legal issues on how you bid and how you get it done, so that's going to be the biggest hurdle, I think. Okay, anything else? Like, any, any other comments from the public? I'll open it up for any comments for public participation on any, anything.
Hi, Heather Kershner, 22 Cedar Heights. I just wanted, had a question for the board and Dr. Alfano. In reference to the weather, how it, how they're predicting, you know, rather extreme heats and heat indexes, and I was just wondering if there's any sort of policy? I know, obviously, we have a new weather policy for the winter, but I was just wondering if there was one.
Dr. Alfano?
That is usually a county decision, that sometimes either the Health Department and/or the County Superintendent will send out a alert, or superintendents, like we do with snow days, will go together and close. As of right now, no one is doing anything.
No one's doing it. So there's not, like, any set temperature by a specific line?
Not, not that I know of.
Really?
No.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay? Come on.
Dear Board Members, I come before you tonight asking you to reconsider the change in HMO health care providers. Our members are very satisfied with the quality of care they are receiving from Etna. I understand that the Board of Education has the legal right to change carriers as long as they provide equal to or better than coverage. However, the satisfaction of your employees should be taken into consideration. Over the past several weeks, many of our members have told me how satisfied they are with the Etna HMO. We have been with Etna for a very long time, and our members have become very comfortable with the service they have received. Now, with no discussion, we're surveying the members about their satisfaction with